Community High School District 100 Board to Order. May I have a roll call?
Here.
There.
Hayd Kovak.
There.
Lewis.
Here.
Radzinski.
Yep.
Rago.
Here.
We have a call. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sam, please read our Fenton Mission, the Lee and Bison Way Statements.
Thank you. Fenton Mission Statement: Cultivates successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Fenton Belief Statement: Successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Next item is recognition. Sam, again.
Okay, very good. We have a very special evening, and the two of our own are gonna be recognized here this evening. We're gonna start with Leo Figaroa. Leo, right here on my right. Yeah, Leo said, "Oh, boy." Oh, boy is right. Well-deserved. A distinguished service award for Leo. And a little bit of background, he's an INSPIRA Award winner. INSPIRA is the Illinois chapter of the National School Public Relations Association. And our very own Rick Cambick, of course, is a member of that professional group. They conduct distinguished service awards every year to recognize individuals who make a difference in their school communities by promoting public education and enhancing its programs and services. They were, well, he was recognized along with Dr. Batson, May 10th, at the recognition breakfast in Bolingbrook. Leo was recognized in the category for School Board Member. And here's the summary of his recognition. Mr. Figaroa has served on the Fenton Community High School District 100 Board of Education for six years. Most of that time is the only minoritized board member. He is often the calm voice of reason on the board. He brings families to the table via Fenton's Spanish-speaking parent group and a newly-instituted annual CERMEZ fundraiser. His actions generate engagement, which leads to students having more informed parents at home and a greater sense of belonging while at school. Congratulations to Leo, and thank you for all you do for our students and families.
Thank you.
And now the next recognition will turn over to Rick Cambick.
Again, congratulations, Leo. It's an honor working with you, and every single one of you, you never know when I'm gonna put you up on the spotlight. Dr. Batson was recognized in the administrators category. It's been a privilege to serve next to Jim for several of his accomplishments. For those who don't know, Jim previously worked in the corporate world, also in higher education, and he's an elected school board member where he lives. His experiences, his skills, and his ability to think outside the box has helped Fenton to modernize our infrastructure, including being able to televise these meetings, and provide unique tools to our students and staff, especially during the pandemic. My favorite project is teaming up with Jim to creatively use some of our generic communication tools to, our software tools, to sign up 7,000 people for our vaccination events, and then to send them reminders, and then to log them in. So using tools that we had that were maybe kind of on the fringe in very innovative ways to make a big difference in our community. Much to Bruce's delight, Jim knows how to find a bargain. And this is important because Jim has always advocated for every single student to get the resources and the support that they need, including our one-to-one Chromebook program, making sure extra Chromebooks are available for students when they're being replaced, the hotspots, all sorts of other tech components for whatever kids may need at their level. So, just like Dr. Benson, I'm gonna read the summary that was presented at the recognition breakfast. Dr. Jim Batson has taken huge steps towards making sure all students at Fenton Community High School District 100 have the technology tools they need for 21st century learning. His years of lobbying, deal-making, and strategic spending caught the attention of Tech and Learning, which is a national publication that delivers news on technology and education. In December 2022, Tech and Learning recognized Dr. Batson's efforts towards technological equity by presenting him with the Innovative Technology Director Award for the Chicago region. So that obviously caught the attention of my peers and all of the efforts that have enhanced our school for our students and the way we communicate with them. So congratulations, Jim. Thank you for all you've done for our school. So on the next slide, the fun doesn't stop. Not surprising, Dr. Batson was also recognized last week by his peers in the Illinois Educational Technology Leadership, Leaders, Illinois Technology Leaders. They presented him with the Delta Award, which goes to outstanding school district leaders who champion technology and provide a beacon that calls to transform learning for all students. Much of the same highlights I just gave you a few moments ago were mentioned at his recognition. But they also mentioned an earlier time in his career when Dr. Batson volunteered to help his local schools set up computer labs for their students that were highly coveted. Little did he know that several years later in his career, he'd be helping Fenton High School use grant money to acquire Chromebooks for every single student to have their own computer or Chromebook. And then creatively navigate leases to make sure that we could get affordable repairs and have extras on hand if needed. I E T L referenced Dr. Batson's advocacy for technology while he served on school boards and on national committees. So he's taken his expertise beyond Fenton in many ways. There are other achievements mentioned, but they're a bit over my head. Rest assured, all the other techies in there were very impressed, and they were excited, and they were cheering him on. So I'm gonna take that as a big win. And so in summary, it's not just us who are gonna miss Dr. Batson. So he's had a great career, and congratulations. Thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you, and congratulations to Leo as well. It's an honor to receive these, but I don't do it by myself. I can't do this by myself. Of course, when Rick mentions the early in the career computer labs, that was back in the early '80s, so it's been a while. But these things don't come to me by myself. It's great teams like these folks back here that also deserve some of the accolades that go along with this. So I appreciate it, and thank you so much.
And just to jump in here real quick, it's also Dr. Batson's last board meeting here tonight as he is retiring and echo some of the comments that were made earlier. He's provided incredible insight here for the district over the years, and want to thank you for your service, and it's a luxury having someone like him who has a lot of knowledge in a lot of different areas in addition to technology. So you're gonna be missed. And I also want to also recognize Bruce Martin, who's also retiring. He, we didn't do a video for you, Bruce. I know that you requested that we didn't. But we also value Bruce and his insight, and you'll get a taste of that when he goes through the budget for 2425 here shortly. But it's seriously, these are men of great character, tremendous insight and commitment. And, you know, I want to wish you both the best in your retirements and as you move forward with a variety of different things. So with that being said, I think we're gonna transition to a video for Dr. Batson, right?
Hey, Jim. Congratulations. You can nap anytime you want now. Seriously, you don't have to listen to me anymore. I know it puts you to sleep. But thank you so much for all the mentorship, for all the great brainstorming, all the ideas, and thanks for taking Fenton High School to the next level. A lot of the stuff you brought from the corporate world, a lot of the stuff you brought from Harper College really diversified the opportunities and everything we were able to provide to our students. A lot of the great successes we have here, we owe to you. Thank you very much, my friend.
Congratulations, Dr. Batson, on your retirement. I'd like to congratulate you for your years of service here. It's been a great time that you've worked with us and for us. I'd like to highlight that your value to the organization goes well beyond not just your leadership in the area of technology, but with your board experience and your wisdom in a variety of areas, even working on some construction planning. We're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss your conversations. We're gonna miss, like I said, your wisdom. But more importantly, we wish you the best with the rest of your life as you spend time, not only with your wife, but also your kids and grandkids. So Jim, thanks again, and take care.
Jim, best of luck on your retirement, and congratulations on this milestone. Know that you are gonna be missed at Fenton. We will miss all of your insight and experience and expertise, but I'm so excited for you to be able to take this time to pursue your interests, spend time with your family, and truly enjoy all the hard work that you've put in. So best of luck in your retirement.
Hi, Jim. The time has come. All these years you've worked for, it is here. So congratulations. I've appreciated working with you, your great wisdom, your board stories, and your wise comments and suggestions. So, you know, I wish you all the best. I know you're gonna be doing a lot in retirement, cruising and traveling throughout the United States, so, and probably out of the country as well. So all the best, and I hope to be joining you very soon.
Happy retirement, Jim. Your day has finally arrived where you can kick back and relax, and I know you're gonna enjoy retirement as much as I've been enjoying mine. So to that, I say, good health, fun travels, and enjoy family and friends. Salute.
Hey, Jim. Happy retirement. It was a pleasure working with you this past year. I'm gonna miss you.
Happy retirement, Jim. Enjoy your forever vacation.
Hey, Jim. Wishing you all the best on your retirement. It's been great getting to know you, working together with you, getting things done. Enjoy this time with your family, relax, and if you are ever in the southwest Florida area, look us up. Don't be a stranger. It would be great to get together with you. And once again, it's been great getting to know you, and most of all, just enjoy and relax.
Hey, Jim. Thank you for all of your mentorship and all the opportunities you've provided for us. It has been a pleasure working with you for the last six years, and thank you for everything you've done for Fenton. I'm so excited for you and all the family and travel time you have to look forward to during retirement. Congratulations.
Jim, I've enjoyed working with you for these past few years on plenty of projects, both big and small, from our access point replacements and internet issues to our exciting outdoor COVID graduation. So congratulations on your retirement. May the years ahead be filled with new endeavors and happy adventures. Congratulations, Jim.
Jim, I've only been here for a couple of years, but I would like to thank you for sharing your knowledge, skills, and wisdom that you have by the time I've been working with you. Hope you have a good retirement. Enjoy it, and hope we'll cross paths one day.
Jim, thank you for the opportunity to join the team. It has been a great experience working with you. I hope you have a relaxing and fulfilling retirement. Thank you for all of your hard work, and we will miss you. Congratulations, Jim.
Hey, Jim. Thank you so much for the opportunity to join the Fenton family. It's been a real pleasure to work with you and to connect on our shared love of music. We'll try not to bring the place down while you're gone. Enjoy your retirement, and congratulations.
Congratulations, Jim.
Dr. Batson, congratulations. I am so very happy for you. I always knew that having an administrator with a musical background, let alone one who was a musician himself, was going to be a unique asset. No other time did this show up in full force than during the pandemic. I'm not sure that we would have had the success that we did without your help. In fact, I know that we would not have had the success that we did without your help. Having a musician's ear, having a musician's background, having someone who cares so much about music and making it work was a tremendous gift. Thank you for all of the work that you've put in for our in-person concerts when we got back, but also thank you for the forethought to give us all of the technology that we needed in order to make e-learning work to the best of our ability, to make our online productions work, to supplement our classes when we were doing half here, half there, to support our spaghetti with a song that was virtual, to perform our solo non-subtle contest that was hybrid, to support our final concert that year that had students spaced out throughout the auditorium, and we were streaming things. We could not have done it without your support. There are so many more challenges that have come with teaching music post-pandemic, some of which I'm not sure we would have been equipped to handle or even knew what to do with without some of your expertise. It really has meant so much that you have cared. Thank you for all that you have done for music here at Fenton High School. I wish you the very best in your retirement.
Three minutes. Did you sign in, Jim?
Yeah, I did not. First of all, I want to-
The floor does not recognize you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I want to qualify that very first comment about taking a nap. I think it was one of during Bruce's budget conversation. Thank you, thank you. Speechless. It's been an honor. Thank you.
Cameron, do we have any public comments tonight?
Yes, we do.
As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, with a limit this evening of 30 minutes total. As a reminder, please address staff members and students by title and not by name to protect their privacy. Thank you.
She's already up here, but Barbara.
My name is Barbara Daimler, and I'm a resident of Bensonville. My son and daughter went to Fenton High School. But I'm here tonight to represent the VFW Post, which includes Bensonville, Wooddale, and Itasca. And I wanted to speak on two subjects, and I'll keep it short. I'll try to be my three minutes. The first one is scholarships that are available through the VFW. It is a contest that they need to enter with a video essay. This year's topic is America Today, Our Forefather's Vision. The deadline for submitting scholarships for the VFW is October 31st, because it goes first to the post level, which is us, and we meet in Wooddale, and then it goes to the district, then it goes to the state, and then if they finally qualify, they go up to national, and the top scholarship, I believe this year, was in the $35,000 range. Okay, so that's what I want your students to get excited about and apply for. The other thing that I wanted to discuss just briefly is that there is a National Citizenship Education Teacher Award in all the teachers in, they have separate groups, K through five, six through nine, six through eight, and then high school level for the teachers. We want to recognize those educators that instill national pride in the students. Eligible for $1,000 award towards their continued education, and the school also receives $1,000. We want to encourage the criteria for judging our citizenship, innovation, resources, and passion. So I'm going to leave these applications here, and my name and number are on the application. So if you have any questions, somebody can call me.
Anna S.
Hello. Good evening, President Lewis, Dr. Benson, and members of the board. I'm here on a good note. I'm here just to ask your permission if tennis backboard can be placed on the tennis courts over there at Fenton. I acquired the funds, considered the stipulation as a few give permission that the board can be placed on Fenton property. I've heard one concern so far that the board can damage, yes, the board can damage the fence. I have called the company who I've gotten the estimate from, and the owner said in his 30 years, he has never had a backboard ruin a fence, but he has seen the wind screens that we have up ruin fences or damage them when there are tornado winds. So I guess since we have wind screens, then maybe possible we can have a backboard, right? And that's, and then besides that, I want to just take, thank the board for all you've done. I was thinking about this meeting driving here, and I'm like, oh, my goodness, this board has done so much for our school. I mean, besides viewing the nice field and track and, you know, all the other things you've done inside for the kids, like the field trips, and I'm sure a lot of support that you provided. So just thank you for, you know, doing so much hard work in so few years or months that I've been here. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next item is informational.
No, 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 we're continuing with the meeting. Thank you for your comments, so. Okay, so now we're gonna go through informational items. We're gonna start out with an update from Franzic. Franzic is the law firm that is conducting our independent review. We have here tonight Jennifer Smith and Amy Dickerson. So take it away.
Great. Thank you. My name's Jennifer Smith. My partner, Amy Dickerson, is here with me. We are from the law firm, Franzic PC. Our law firm, I want to tell you a little about our law firm. We are dedicated to education and employment issues. We have 30 years of experience and represent, probably if you just look at schools by population, the majority of school districts in Illinois, serving the majority of students in Illinois. Amy and I lead our firm's team on addressing sexual misconduct in schools. We have devoted good portions of our careers to helping schools prevent and proactively create environments that are safe for students, staff, and community members, but then also when situations arise, help and support with the appropriate response. We have been engaged by the district to review the handling of reports of sex-based misconduct by a former employee. Amy and I are personally handling the review, which is well underway. Thus far, we've received full cooperation from everyone we've sought information from. We are seeking information, both we're reaching out to individuals within the district and outside the district. We are the points of contact for anyone with relevant information- We are the points of contact for anyone with relevant information that might want to share it on this matter. We appreciate the opportunity to support the district. We take this endeavor extremely seriously, and we'll continue in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next topic is the STEM wing update. Mitch, come on up.
Good evening again. So following up on our groundbreaking last month, the work on the new STEM facility is underway. We've begun the excavation for the new addition, along with some of the perimeter footings around the adjacent buildings. We're waiting on utility relocation to complete that excavation and begin full foundation work. As part of this work, we've begun the infill of the windows along the existing classroom wing. We've begun running utilities from our existing fire pump room down to the new addition, as well as begun doing some electrical relocation within the existing building to accommodate the demolition that will take place next summer. As part of all this, we also have been working on, I think the next slide is the stadium restroom. The new stadium restroom, adjacent to the existing concession stand, are well underway. Foundations, underground plumbing, and slab upgrade have all been poured, and we anticipate the perimeter and interior walls to begin within the next week, with steel arriving in mid-July so that the building can remain on track to be completed prior to the first football games.
Could you provide a bit of other projects that may be lingering relating to the storm waters that are still out there?
Yeah, so a couple of projects that are still in process is the investigation work on the existing storm and sanitary throughout the site. We have done all the areas except the areas adjacent to the train tracks. We expect that investigation work to be done in the next week or so. Once that's done, we'll assess any remediation work that needs to be done, as well as complete the recreating of the ditch along the east property line to facilitate the drainage from the front of the building around to Green Street where it enters into the city stormwater system.
Do you have some rain and things come since this has been going? How is the mitigation process? How is that all... How's it perform exceptionally?
Yeah, everything performed as designed. There were, you know, with the last couple heavy rains, we've not experienced any issues throughout the campus.
Fantastic.
Reed?
Yeah, I just kind of a late observation on my part, since it's already... Those two cutouts on that upper left-hand picture?
Yes.
The cement?
Yes.
Are those meant for the entrance doors?
Yes, so there's a thickened concrete slab at the door entrances there. So when they pour the concrete, you have a thicker concrete slab at the door entrances. So that's where the two doors will enter into the men's and women's.
So what's going to happen? The men and women are going to walk side by side into their respective doors?
Yeah, so that's at the outside face of the building. So it'll be two doors, men's on one side, women's on the other side, where you'll enter in at the exterior of the building.
And we had to put those there in order to get that privacy hallway, correct?
Yes, and so the hallway, there's still about an eight-foot corridor between the existing building, existing concession stand, and the new building. They'll take you to the family restroom, which is located on the rear of the building there, along with the janitor's closet where some of the mechanical equipment will be placed.
Remember, the actual doorways are where they are because there's that privacy wall inside that you're going to walk?
Yes, yeah, correct. There's a chase wall. You can kind of see in that upper right-hand photo where the rebar is sticking up and the plumbing fixtures are sitting. That will be your share... It's a shared wall that'll have all the plumbing piping located within it.
All right. Go for it.
Yep. There's no other questions? I'll step to the side for a minute.
Okay, thanks. Don't go too far. Summer projects update with Jose.
Yeah, so we kind of talked about these in the previous meeting, but on the left-hand side there, we are replacing the fieldhouse doors, so that is in progress. We're also replacing the doors at door 19, which is our kitchen receiving door. That's also in progress on the right-hand side. And then here on the left-hand side, we are redoing our old deli line to include a storage room, an office space on the far left-hand side, which you can't see there, for Arbor, our food service provider. And then on the right-hand side, we have a mother's room for staff to use if necessary. And then on the right-hand side, sorry, can you go back for just one second? That is the staff cafeteria, so we're just going to have that as a serving line if we ever decide to do an event or something there that's available for us. We did complete the asbestos abatement, so I'm stealing a little bit of Mitch's thunder right now. We did complete the bandroom asbestos abatement, and we're currently working on the BAS system upgrades throughout the building right now, which is part of our HVAC system.
Jose, the new counter in the staff kitchen, is that's where those pipes were sticking out of the ground so that that over covered?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so it's like a safety thing, but also...
It allows a serving location for those...
Yeah, we have an event in there or something like that.
Perfect.
Right, here we go.
Mitch?
So quick update on the bandroom. As Jose mentioned, we completed the floor tile abatement in there. Once that work was completed, we moved forward with the selective demo, which you kind of see in these photos here, ranging from removal of the carpeting from the walls to prepare them for new drywall and acoustic dispersive panels that will be installed, removal of the ceiling tile, which you can see there. The ceiling grid will be painted, we'll have new lights and new ceiling tiles installed. And then we've also removed some of the existing ductwork and the storage rooms that were in the two rear corners to make even more space within those rooms. The demolition of the risers that were in there was done as part of the abatement work, but definitely frees up a lot more room in there. The door you see there in the right-hand photo by the ductwork, that will be bricked in. We have a new door that's going to be installed kind of directly behind that existing ductwork that's staged there on the floor that'll lead into the electric room. And then we have a new double door that has been cut in kind of on the right side of the room there that'll lead into the existing storage room that'll allow additional storage space for instrument storage that will be lost as part of the removal of those two-corner storage closets. And we'll continue working in the room here. We expect drywall to begin in the next week or so, and then we'll move right into finishes within the space.
Any questions on the bandroom?
All still on schedule?
Yep, we're still... Everything's still on schedule. Again, we're preparing for the bandroom to be completed ahead of the start of the school year, the restrooms to be completed ahead of the first football games, and the STEM wing before classes begin in 2025.
I think I may be asking this last, but I forget the answer. I know we did an acoustical measurement for the room prior comparing everything out, which kind of surprised me. Are we going to be doing a post-build acoustical measurement for the panel places and things?
So the panel placement was designed based on the acoustics that were measured before everything started, so...
That's an odd choice for me. That is why I'm curious.
Yeah, I would defer to STR as to, I'm not sure if they're going to be doing a post-install evaluation, but we can certainly follow up on that and get back to the board next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mitch. You can go home now, Mitch. All right, strategic plan, year two. Just to refresh everyone's memory, we are in the second year of a three-year strategic plan. We have finished up this school year as far as following up with our action plans, and we are currently working on some of the action plans for year three. But what we're going to do is we're going to kind of divide up the different components of the strategic plan. Kate Ward is going to kick it off for us.
All right, great. So just a reminder to everyone that you can always take a look at our current progress at the strategic plan and our progress on it. It is all on our website, so either under the administration page, there's a button that takes you right there, and you can kind of see a sample, a snapshot of what it looks like, so there's much more detail there, or you can also go to our About Us page. So I'm going to kick us off. I'm going to talk about teaching and learning and SEL, just a quick summary of what we covered this year. Teaching and learning, our focus was EL strategies for all. So as we've gone over in a lot of our data and talking about one of the areas that we really want to make sure that our instruction is up to date, is making sure that our English-language learners, that we are providing them the scaffolds they need. So myself and our professional development team focused on a year-long process of really working on strategies that's going to continue. It was very well received, and a lot of teachers are doing summer work on that. We incorporated student voice into that strand. We had, part of our professional development was that we actually interviewed and videotaped many of our English learners to give testimonies about what worked well for class, what worked well in classes for them, and where they struggled. And so teachers were able to hear, and I think that personalization and having that student voice, a lot of teachers were like, oh, that kid is in my class, and like, now I understand why that might be helpful. So that was one way we were able to combine student voice with teaching and learning. Our MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, we really focused on our interventions particularly for our freshmen. So we started that class of academic math lit, where we had had academic lit from our English strand, but then we added in the math, and we had a lot of success with that. We will continue that next year. So giving freshmen who are coming in who need extra support in English and math are now getting a class with an English teacher and a math teacher in addition to their English and math class. So that support class has been really successful. And then finally, career pathways. Michelle and her team, along with everyone else in the school, has done a great job. Internships, the number of students taking internships next year is up. We also completed our education strand, so we have more classes in our education strand. And this year, we're going to continue working on our business and computer science pathways, so we're excited about that. I'm going to highlight SEL. So SEL stands for social emotional learning. So that is a robust committee that meets once a month, and they do that so that they can really quickly respond to the social emotional needs of our students and even to our staff. Most of the education from SEL happens in our Bison Time classes, so students have different lessons that are delivered to all of them during that time period. We also focus on interventions for students that need social emotional groups or social emotional help, so we focused on making sure that those interventions go into classes where students might need them the most, so Bison Orange, which is an academic support class, and also in our academic math lit class. So those were two ways that we were able to target students who sometimes have greater social emotional needs, but all of our students are being covered also in Bison Time.
All right, so then the next one is the diversity, equity, and inclusion strand. We actually have an equity action plan that you can also find on our website. Kate kind of mentioned how you get to our strategic plan. In that same area, you can find our equity action plan. So under the equity action plan, we have five different strands that work to meet the goals of that. We have systems, teaching and learning, student voice, climate, and culture. We have professional learning, and then we have family and community as agency. So we have a variety of administrators and teachers that are all working on these different strands to support our students, to support our staff, and to really, again, highlight, you know, the need for equity and how we can improve, you know, the overall culture of the building for all students. And you can, just like the strategic plan, you can go on here and see what are the... What's the status of each of the goals, whether it's ongoing, completed, or it's in progress? So quite a bit of information on there to look at at your leisure. We will be reviewing this as we go into the fall with Mr. Rubio, our DEI, our Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. So this will all get, you know, updated as we go into the fall.
Thanks, Jose. And I have student life. I've worked with Julia Bray and Pedro Rodriguez, our athletic director, and we have really tried to enhance our extracurricular programming, whether it be activities or athletics. Our participation rate, which is a big goal of ours, is right around 70%. We're looking to continue for that to improve. Obviously, some of the work that's been done inside, outside lends itself to a better environment for athletics and to hold various activities. As Kate mentioned, student voice is a big point of emphasis, and so we continue student voice through student life. One of the ways we did that is my principal advisory committee kind of meshed with some of our other student voice initiatives, so quarterly I would meet with them. And then they've also met on various topics like grading, different activities and things like that, so it was just a nice combination of events there. We've also started to survey students more as far as how was your experience, particularly in athletics, just to see what can we learn, you know, moving forward. We're also looking at more leadership opportunities for students. We had an Upstate A Leadership Summit, which we had many of our kids go to. We also had a multilingual summit, and for example, this next year, our... I'm drawing a blank, but some of our clubs are also going to leadership, more leadership-type opportunities. So we're looking forward to that, continuing that tradition.
All right, so I'll be talking about the communication, collaboration, and community strand. There are four goals. They mostly focused upon enhancing effective communication between ourselves, staff, the community, and especially a lot of our parents, parent groups, continuing comprehensive approaches to meeting our students' basic needs, creating community partnerships. So some of the great successes we've had, you know, large volumes of information on our construction, updates, keeping people apprised of what's happening, as well as all the positive news, accomplishments, kids are doing, a lot of the great events, community building stuff. We added another Fenton Faces Recognition Breakfast, and that's always super popular. It packs this room. Parents love coming in and hearing how awesome their kids are, so it's been a great ability to engage the family and keep the family involved in what's happening at school. We've revised our alumni page. We make a lot of inroads connecting with some of our alums who have ideas that they can share with us, or they can possibly join some of our initiatives. That is particularly an area that we could see a lot more growth and consistency with, so that'll be an ongoing focus. We share our school calendars with the center districts to try and strengthen our partnerships with them. We welcome eighth graders into our school a bit more so they can see and get a glimpse of what Bison Nation is all about. Some of my favorite are always with the music programs, especially the kids who get to do the drum line at center field during the football games. I was there this past season. They were loving it. They couldn't wait to get the blue and orange on. And then at our future freshman night in January, our panel of students that speak to the eighth graders incorporated a really great presentation on social emotional learning, so getting the eighth graders more of a head start as to what that's all about, and we've been infusing that in more of our activities. As far as our students and families' needs, through our partnership with the Bensonville-Wooddale Food Pantry, we have sustained and grown the Food for Families program, and we're looking at long-term options, especially Bensonville District Two, who partners with us for Food for Families, took it a bit further to the next level and used one of their food distributions to go to a neighborhood instead of having people come to Johnson School. So we're able to look at data and see where some of our students are at, where some of our students are at, and where some of the general need is through the food pantry's resources, and then take a food truck there for the families that don't have cars readily available at 3:15, 3:30. So that's something we're going to continue to explore and possibly elevate that with the food pantry. So it's a great partnership. MTSS, I don't even want to try and explain all the awesome stuff. There was a presentation a couple of months ago, but there's a lot more engagement with the parents, getting the kids bought in, helping some of the students that are potentially struggling or vulnerable. And then Kate mentioned career pathways. We've been doing more connections to get some of the local businesses or some of our alumni, some new contacts to give our students real-life experiences, whether internships, which we've got a lot of internships, or even the simple thing of coming in for a presentation. We've been getting more of those, showing kids what they're reading about, what they're seeing on the computer is like in real life, and different field trips, and now we're working on mentorship. on mentorships. So some of the professionals coming in every so often and giving real-world critiques to the students. So bringing the world to our students.
I'm going to tag-team the Securing the Future with Bruce. I'm going to start out, there's three major goals that we had for this portion of the strategic plan. The first was to create a system to continually monitor progress on the longer-age facilities plan and report on updates to the community, especially regarding, at that point in time, this was a year ago when this plan, when this goal was made, the water mitigation project. Well, as we know, that project was completed. It actually has come in under budget, and so we're grateful for that. But ongoing monitoring, we regularly meet every other Tuesday with a team that involves the architects, involves construction management, involves Fenton Administration, to get a complete detailed rundown of exactly what's happening with all of our construction projects so that everyone's on the same page and we know what needs to be done. Through that, then we gather that information, and working with folks like Rick, we're able to produce, whether it's social media, generate emails, update our status on the webpage through various media presentations to be able to communicate to the community, keep people updated, especially as, for example, when we're doing construction, we might have to shut down a walkway, might have to shut down a parking lot, have to reroute traffic, that kind of thing. So it's very important to keep that communication going. So that's the first goal, and I'll turn it over to Bruce for the next.
Sure. The second goal, aligning the budget to support the goals of the '22 through '25 strategic plan. And the action plan was aligning the budget with the sustainability goals like LED lighting, energy-saving programs via consumption reduction, an energy audit, and the BAS system upgrade. And some of the things regarding the LED lighting, for example, we've received rebates from ComEd to install LED lighting in the fieldhouse, the front gym, the cracker box. All those areas were done substantially less with rebates with ComEd. So we took advantage of that grant program to make that happen. We're continuing to look and explore for other energy grants that may be available to us. As we work closely with our architects, as you heard earlier tonight, when we develop our priority list, we'll certainly be integrating some of those things and making those a priority to make sure that we are energy-conscious as we move forward with future projects. And the BAS system, as we mentioned earlier tonight as well, that's a major project because you can see kind of evidence throughout the building as wires dangling from the ceiling, but that is happening as we speak to integrate.
Bruce, those wires are not live, are they? Okay, all right, I don't want to make it wrong.
Don't touch them, just in case, but they, no, they're not. So, good point, though. And moving on to the next goal, continuing to monitor and manage district resources to secure financial strength and maintain reasonable reserves. We'll continue to pursue federal and state grant opportunities, particularly those that support school facilities and our construction. We continue to apply for the maintenance grant. We've been successful in getting that for a couple of years now, and we will continue to explore other opportunities. I know that we've received, or should be receiving this year, this upcoming year, a grant that, for a CTEI grant, not necessarily with, necessarily for school facilities, but for the district to offset some programming costs. So we're pleased about that, and we'll continue to explore those opportunities as they become available.
Could you guys tell us again where to find it?
On the website.
Yep, so on the website, if you go under Administration, if you look at the top, I guess left there, there's a button that says Strategic Plan. So that's probably the easiest place. It's also under About Us. There's a link to it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, now we have the copier lease renewal with Jim.
Just a bit of information on this coming up for a vote later. We're replacing five of our current copiers, including one, there's one right over here. These have been in use for five years. They're on a five-year lease, coming off lease. It's a pretty typical thing to cycle these every five years. So the good news with this is our lease rates actually going down, and the better news is instead of five copiers, we're getting six. And the best news is that that sixth copier is actually going to be a color copier, replacing a color printer that's sitting right over there. The color printer cost per page is in the 25, 30 cent per page range. It's very expensive. The color cost per page for this device is, you know, less than a tenth of that. It's about 2.5 cents, 2.4 cents per page. So the overall operating cost is going to be significantly low, lower. We will manage that just as we do this printer, so that it's not abused. It's, these are the only devices that are really allowed for students to print on, but staff can also print on them. So it'll be, continue to be managed, but the good news is lower cost for the lease, more devices, and actually saving money on top of that by eliminating a very high-cost laser printer. So this will come up for a vote later. Questions?
Yeah. Did you bid this out to a couple of different manufacturers? Did you roll it in the same one?
So we periodically price against each other, but this is actually coming through a consortium pricing, consortium contract that's already been bid out by another organization. And the second answer to that is these complement, we have a whole fleet of these that are all managed through certain systems and management systems and page counting systems and things like that. So it's important to have them all using the same operating system, the same systems to be able to connect and talk to each other.
I heard earlier a call-out for your Champions of Bargain, so I'm glad to see that.
Yes, yes, yes.
Even for six, even over five.
Yeah, yeah, and this has been a story. And these are, so another thing that I made sure that we've done on the last few leases, the prior leases, when I first got here, were cash buyout, like a fair market value buyout lease. These are dollar buyout leases. So we've had a couple of cases where the copier's still in really good shape, and we want to continue to use it. So rather than really, you know, give it back and release another one, we've been able to maintain those. So we've done that in the past and will likely continue to do that in the future. In this case, we're just being able to add one to be able to save some money.
Jim, the way these are written, you could pick a lease, you could pick a copier up for a buck at the end of the lease, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's what, we can, yeah. We basically paid for it through the lease rather than, yeah, yeah. Yeah, all right, all right.
I've known them before you have to take, pay, pay market value.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, in this case, we actually, when we do a lease like this and we renew it, they give us a buyback amount. So we get a discount on the new copiers based on basically a trade-in value.
The lease rates are competitive.
Yes, yeah. And the leasing company, American Capital, is well-known in the K-12. They focus a lot of energy in the K-12 and trying to do the best. So it's a, it's a pretty common, common thing, so. Other questions? Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to an update on our freshman fee package, and Kate's going to lead that.
Yeah, this is also in the consent agenda, but I just wanted to fill you in. So this year, we are really cognizant of all of our fees, right? We want to make sure that they are affordable for our families. This year, our freshman fees are going to go up $47, $47.50, but I want to explain to you that we really think that this is something that is going to benefit all of our students. So one of the things that we've struggled with and all schools have struggled with, and many of you will relate to this, having students who went through our mathematics courses, is the cost of the graphing calculators, right? And that is actually, most of those graphing calculators are about $120. So what's happened is in our math classes, it's, students have to buy them on their own, right? And many of our students do, but many of our students don't. And they need to use these to be successful on things like AP or the SAT or now the ACT. They really need to have these calculators, and some of our kids just don't do that. So that's really been a struggle. We've played around with, do we buy classroom sets? What do we do? And thanks to Michelle Papa-Nicolau, our math department, and Bruce Martin, we've come up with a plan that we think is going to work really well. We did a lot of research, and we found a graphing calculator that's called NumWorks. This is kind of like state-of-the-art. Our math teachers are super excited about it. It's retail about $80. And what's going to happen is that all freshmen, as part of their freshman package, are going to now get a NumWorks calculator that will be theirs, that they will be able to have for four years. So Fenton is going to subsidize about half of that cost through grants and a little bit of local funds. And then, of course, we also know with fees that if we have students that are in need, there's fee waivers for them. So we feel like this is a very, very good option for our students and that we were going to be able to ensure then that all of our students have the calculators that we need. So it is an increase in the cost. It's just the freshman year, but for $47, they are going to get a calculator that, you know, is, they'll be able to use with them into college. So we just wanted to make you aware of that and answer any questions that you have. If you want to take a look, I didn't charge it, which is a total fail. I should have charged it. But our math teachers and our computer science teachers are really excited. All of our math teachers are being trained this summer. There's like three-hour training on making sure so all students, you know, and this will roll up, obviously. We're going to start with our freshman courses and then going forward.
I hate to ask a dumb question, but if the calculator, I know its value, but I also know that they've got a much bigger and more powerful calculator that they bring around than that Chromebook. So what's the value add of the calculator versus just getting good plotting software on the computer and then using that instead?
They cannot use it on any of the tests, a Chromebook. So that's one of the major ones, and I will tell you, this is not my area of expertise, but there are other functions that the software, Jim, you could probably, I know we've done a lot of exploring with this, there are functions on the Chromebook that just can't be done or it's very laborious or having the kids pull it out. So the teachers and the students prefer to have that calculator, but the major reason is this is SAT, ACT, AP-approved that they can use this. You cannot use a Chromebook. Oh, look, it is working.
It's a swing game.
I mean, there are some in there, and the students can actually do some programming of them, but, I mean, you know, no different than their Chromebook.
I'm not going to say I did or didn't do, you know, programming of my calculator to assist me on testing, but I'm assuming there's a way to clear any of that before testing, et cetera.
Yes, yep. Just like the TIs, and our teachers will be trained on that.
Well, I mean, they didn't used to have that. A3 didn't, A3 Plus, you could hide it, but.
Kent, you're giving all our secrets away, man. Come on.
I'm just asking about the utility of the 25 years, again, why it's so expensive. But anyway, this carries, I appreciate it.
Don't worry about it. Me and John had the slide rule.
An advocate.
Hang in there, Reed. Jose, you can go through policy updates, please.
Yes, so this isn't a change to any of the policies, just updating names. So that's basically what we're doing is, because of some of the changes administratively, now we're going to have Dr. Eric Aranda and Julia Bray as the point people for the majority of these, you know, titles. So those, they would be the ones that you would go to initially if you had a situation that you needed to report, and then we would take it from there depending on the severity of the situation, so.
I was looking at it, trying to figure out what the actual change was. Is it merely just who is now the point person for each of these? Or was there any change, even non-sustantative change in the policy itself?
No change in the policy, just mainly, I was the nondiscrimination coordinator, and now a new position I'm in, we needed to replace me as the primary reason for this. Yeah.
As the owners of these areas, a change?
Right, exactly.
Which wasn't obvious when I was looking at the docs for it, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and just to kind of talk about that a little bit, we are going to have a policy meeting next month, so. I know you're excited, so we'll make sure that.
That is circled on Kent's calendar.
There we go, there we go.
Like in a big red marker.
Do you guys joke? I decided for a bunch of the talk and just to answer some official policy questions, if I've got other ideas and things, you know, I'll open it up, Jose.
Very well, yeah, yeah.
Okay, here we go. Let's keep moving. Jose, again, FOIA's?
So all these have been resolved, first and foremost. Number one, wanted purchases for the last five years regarding buildings and grounds. Number two, wanted information on the independent review and information on administrative contracts. Number three, this is a quarterly thing that we receive from this company, specifically regarding P-cards. And then lastly, this gentleman wanted, number four, wanted information regarding the bids for the stem wing. So, so that's it. They're all resolved.
Okay, now I did add an other. You will notice this in the consent agenda. Bruce, do you want to just give a, please, a very brief overview of the federal grant process?
Yep, this is the consolidated district plan for FY '25, so the '24-'25 school year. And the primary purpose of this plan, which is created every year, is to lay the groundwork for our applications for federal title grants and idea grants, and we've talked about those a little bit earlier. The state requires a plan that demonstrates how we will use all the funds in a coordinated fashion. And the plan is written in alignment with the district's strategic and equity action plans. So we're not approving any dollars tonight, we're just approving our plan to move forward to allow us to continue to receive right grants and receive the funding for the grants.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, consent agenda.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Upstein.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2024-2025 tentative budget as presented and placed on public display in the district office? It is further recommended that the board schedule a public hearing at 7:00 PM during the regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 25th, 2024, prior to adoption of the final budget.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Upstein.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve, resolves and approves the surety bond of the treasurer?
So moved.
Second.
Any, roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Point of personal information. Can I get a bit more context on this if the slide is blank?
Yeah, the Board appointed me as the treasurer last month at the May Board meeting. So in addition to that appointment, the Board is required to approve a resolution that approves the surety bond of the treasurer. So the attached resolution will fulfill this requirement, and the resolution and all associated documentation will be filed with the DeBates County Regional Office of Education. So there is a resolution in your packet to approve the surety, and we would submit that to the ROE as required by school code.
Yeah, just the slide was blank, so I just wanted to make reference to that.
Sorry, yeah, it's in the regular board packet, but it didn't make it here, so my apologies.
All good, thank you. Hi, can I get back to roll call, hold on?
Roll call.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the new test book purchased for the 2024 and '25 school year as presented? Any discussion? Roll call.
Figueroa?
Motion.
Oh, motion.
Second.
Third.
Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Upstein.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the 2024-25 consumables and textbook replacement as presented?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education authorizes the interim superintendent to adjust administrator salaries effective July the 1st for the 2024-25 fiscal year? Adjustments are as follows. Administrators' salaries for an overall increase of 5%. This will not include administrators who are in their retirement track.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Upstream.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the 2024-25 Board of Education meeting dates scheduled as presented?
Question on that, if I may. Our November 20th date, there is the meeting at the, I assume, the Triple I Conference, is that same week? Previously, we had moved it up a week, you know, moved our board meeting up for when that intersection has occurred?
Once we get, it's, okay, go ahead.
Well, I mean, we, it's possible we could move it, I don't know, do we want to decide tonight or?
So you're saying it's typically for November and December is the third week and not the fourth? So is that what you're saying?
I was just noting the Triple I Conference.
Is the third week also?
It's the 19th.
Is the 22nd.
Or 22nd, yeah.
Right after, so typically, we did, for the Board to have, you know, with that time off that we typically move it up a week, or we had previously, and I just noticed that we didn't this time, so my only question was, do we want to take that into effect now? Or do we want to come back and do a resolution on that next time, you know?
Does anyone else have an opinion or?
Well, no, just for me, for some context, so the 20th is a Wednesday, then there's a Thursday, and then what, the Triple I Conference starts on the Friday?
Friday.
Friday or Sunday, correct. So historically, we moved it up a week.
Yeah, we have.
So that's why I was asking, but November, you can't move it the other direction because it's...
Right.
So I'll table my question, and we'll discuss it at a future meeting.
Okay, and then meanwhile, the Board can think about their opinions.
So you're suggesting then that would be on the 13th as opposed?
Right.
Yeah.
Based on precedence.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, but...
Yes, we can, Reed, we can move it, we just have to give proper notice and posting. All right, well, get over it tonight and worry about it next one.
All right, we'll revisit it next one.
If I'm able to answer my question, and we'll come back to it.
Good question, thanks, Kent.
Yes. So moved.
Second.
All right, we've had a discussion, roll call.
Seconded was by, by, was it Professor Rego? Okay, sorry. Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the 2024-2028 contractual agreement between the Fenton Local Organization of Support Staff, FLOS, and the Board of Education as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the 60-month lease of six Conica Minota MFPS through American Capital for the cost of $863.67 per month?
Times eight copiers times 60 months? Six copiers, yes.
Six.
I counted the other case, eight, six.
It works.
Eight, six, three, times six copiers, and 60 months. Times 60 months.
That's a lot of money. I got $310,000.
Does that include the paper in the?
The ink.
Yeah.
The ink, which is really expensive.
And the maintenance.
All right, so it's an all-in?
It's an all-in.
It's all-in.
All-in.
That's why it's a great deal versus what we had before.
I'm saying, all right.
So just imagine that you're going to buy the ink, the paper, maintenance.
All right, I'll defer to the tech guys.
It's truly a steal, I will tell you that, Larry, I'm like, all right, all right. Of this, so. Not that I need six copiers in my house.
He's got copy envy.
Exactly.
I don't want any.
So moved, by the way.
Second. We've had a discussion, so roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the revision for the following policies as presented? 7-20, 2-6, 260, 2-265, 5-10, and 5-20.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Upstream.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Does anyone have any committee reports?
Can you, for Benson Building Foundation?
Well, yeah, unfortunately, both of us missed May 23rd, that was in the middle of birthdays, and I had a rough PT that day, so I was not going anywhere that night, and Kent had an issue informing me of. Our next meeting is July 25th, it sounds like the other meeting went well, and the Subaru check either was or will be received very soon for the foundation to continue functioning. There's some other stuff in the background, very cursory, absorbing another organization, I'm not 100% sure on that, we'll know more after the July 25th meeting. Hopefully Kent or I or both of us will be there, right now it looks good for me at least.
Yep. The kind of bounce off that there was Meals on Wheels, that was done in concert with Subaru, that went very well, and then also they do their 50/50 raffle with the Benson ville music in the park car show, awesome thing of awesomeness, that's been going quite well as well. So while it's not nearly the funds that we get from Subaru, it is, does kind of go towards that funding, and we have benefited here massively from that group, so, you know, I would have heard folks say, this is May or the end, so.
Concur.
Question.
Answer.
Okay.
Maybe.
Maybe. Okay, in the past, that foundation, it was sponsored a mentor band. It's been a while since mentor band is not in play, since 2019.
Mentor band?
Mentor band.
Not even aware of it.
No? Okay, it was a summer program for, it was, I believe, Blahak, Fenton.
Oh, mentor band.
Mentor band.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been a while, again, and I don't know if you guys can table that, or we can decide what to do, if we're going to continue with the mentor band, because the kids, some of them are eager to continue with the band. They used to bring teachers from different places. It was also, well, I'm not going to say the old summer, but it was the summer band.
Oh, summer band, okay, I see, yeah. We'll bring it back to them and compel them to...
I know, I know.
First I heard of it, the next meeting will be in the middle of July, I thought it'll be this year, but...
No, 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 I'm not...
Think about for next year.
Yes, of course.
No, I'm just saying, because, yeah, I was never even aware of it.
Yeah, it's got to be a plan.
It was years ago, years ago, yeah.
The last one, it was 2019.
Yeah.
I remember it.
Yeah, I participated in something like that when I was in my school, so it was very valuable, I didn't realize it was even an Oxford County, we'll bring it back, thank you for that.
Yeah, you know, some of the kids asked, because they were part of it, they are in their late twenties, and they said, hey, we can participate, but I don't see anybody doing the mentor band.
Well, I will, I will personally see if it is brought up, and then they all follow you afterwards to get more, so we can have an educated discussion.
As far as finance facilities, we've had a robust conversation regarding the STEM Wing update, including those remaining projects regarding Stormwater Project completed earlier this, earlier in the spring. The upcoming, ongoing summer projects, proposed capital improvement plan over the next few years, and also initial discussion regarding the 2024-25 tentative budget.
We meet next month for the Board Policy Committee, as you all know, and you could be asking about that, so I hope you're having a good time, bring your highlights.
Oh, yes. Our next board meeting?
And coffee.
Hold on, we got a NASEC meeting last Monday, it was a special meeting. We want the continuing contract services, insurance renewals, and update for the new TLC house this coming school year.
Fantastic.
So what I got.
All right. Next board meeting, Wednesday, July the 24th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, tentative policy committee meeting at 6:00 PM prior to the regular board meeting. There will be two discussion or action items when we come out of closed session regarding addendums for the interim superintendent and interim principal. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the following?
What is the permission? Sorry. Just to clarify, I know we said to do the discussion items we were going to discuss, and then we vote on everything, did we vote on the 2024-2025 tentative budgets?
We don't.
We don't, not at this time.
Yeah, okay.
What we do...
You voted to put it on display.
We vote, we voted to put it on display already.
Gotcha. Yeah, the action item was confusing, I thought we were voting on the budget itself, I was like, wait a minute. Okay, cool. Thank you.
May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the following? 5 Illinois CS 120/2 C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Fenton Community High School District 100. B, 5 Illinois CS 120/2 C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one of more classes of employees. C, 5 Illinois CS 120/2 C11, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. Do we, do we really need to leave? Do we really need to leave?
Have a motion to go back in the open session.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I'm ready. Okay. Jeez, good night.
Good night, Tom.
Good night, Tom.
Roll call.
Wait, who motioned and who seconded? I wasn't ready, I'm sorry.
Wait, who motioned and who seconded? I wasn't ready, I'm sorry.
Julia motioned, I seconded it.
Got it, thank you.
Backwards.
Okay Figueroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Back in open session. May I have a motion that the Board of Education considers the approval of addendum to administrative employment agreement for the interim superintendent?
Salute.
Second. Row call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Epstein.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education considers the approval of addendum to administrative employment agreement for the interim principal?
Salute.
Second.
Row call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rago?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Epstein.
Lewis?
Yes, motion passed.
I'd like to move to adjourn.
All in favor, eh?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you and good night.